Okay, go ahead.
We call the October 1st, 2020, meeting of the City of Santa Cruz Planning Commission to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Spellman.
Here.
Conway.
Here.
Dawson.
Here.
Maxwell.
Here.
Nielsen.
Here.
Greenberg. Chair Shiffrin.
Here. So we don't have anyone with notification. Hopefully Commissioner Green will appear. Are there any statements of oral communication? I mean, disqualification? Seeing, hearing none, I will move to oral communications. Is there anybody on the line who would like to speak to an item that's not on the agenda but properly before the commission for up to three minutes?
I do see somebody has their hand raised, so I'm gonna, ah, one, two, three. Okay, I will start at the top. Speaker, you're on the line.
Please give your name and you have three minutes. Welcome.
Speaker, you're on the line.
Are they muted?
I just asked them to unmute. I'm gonna skip that one. Onto the next. Speaker, you're on the line. So for the members of the public who have their hands raised, this is the time for oral communications. If you wish to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to press star nine to indicate. Otherwise, please lower your hand if you're waiting to speak on another item. Speaker, you're on the line. And then we have another speaker. You're on the line. Are you here to speak for oral communications?
The time to speak for items that are not on the agenda for up to three minutes.
Chair Shiffrin, could we just remind the public that they might need to unmute both the computer and the phone that they're using to call in? That may help. You may need to unmute two things in order to be able to speak.
Um, unless there's an objection, I'm gonna move on. And if a member of the public does ultimately turn out to want to have spoken during oral communications, I would suggest we come back and give them a where this is a technical problem or just where people are here to speak on another item. So I'm gonna move forward. The next item is the approval of the minutes. Does, do any of the commissioners have any changes or revisions to the minutes from September 17th, 2020? Does anybody from the public want to speak to the September 17th minutes? Seeing none, would somebody or one of the commissioners like to move approval of the September 17th minutes?
I'll move.
I'll move approval.
Uh, well, we'll say that Commissioner Dawson moved and Commissioner Nielsen seconded.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Commissioner Nielsen.
Aye.
Spellman.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Dawson.
Aye.
Maxwell.
Aye.
Shiffrin.
Aye. Unanimously, and we'll move on to public hearings. Item number two, City of Santa Cruz Warp Master Plan and Environmental Determination. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, good evening. This is David McCormick with Economic Development, bringing the item forward. Um, tonight, we're just proposing a continuance of this item to a later planning commission date on October 15th. Um, subsequent to scheduling this meeting and notifying the public of it being held, uh, we received a request from the Historic Commission for an opportunity to chime in on the Warp Master Plan. And after review with the city attorney and internal discussions, while we believe it's not necessarily a required step, we feel it's totally appropriate that the Historic Commission has the opportunity to review the master plan and comment on it. Particularly, particularly given the historic nature of the warp structure itself. And as in, um, they will have to approve any historic alteration permits in the future related to the warp structure. Uh, with that said, uh, you know, we're open to any comments or things you'd like us to, to consider as we prepare our staff recommendations for the October 15th date.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so, um, it is, if anyone wants to comment on the item, even though the staff recommendation is to continue it, it looks like all the members of the public have disappeared. I, um, submitted bef, uh, just before the meeting, a letter to staff that I'd like to have added to the agenda when this item comes, uh, returns on the 15th. Is there any problem with that happening? Mr. Butler.
Good afternoon, Chair Shiffrin and Commissioners. There is not a problem with, um, either a conversation amongst the commission or with presenting the information that you have submitted. I would, um, remind the commission that if, um, there is any discussion or if information from a commissioner is submitted, that to adhere with the Brown Act, that the commissioners do not converse with one another on the issue to avoid any consensus that could arise from those conversations outside of the public hearing. So once, um, those conversations happen amongst, you know, if, if one, uh, report is submitted to the entire commission, then, um, that can quickly become a violation of the Brown Act if there are conversations outside of the public hearing. So we're happy to do that, um, and just wanted to make sure that the, the commission is aware of those implications.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so that letter will appear on the next agenda and, um, commissioners, a majority of the commissioners can talk about it among themselves outside of the next meeting.
So actually, no, no conversations can occur among commissioners, um, outside of the meeting because, uh, if there are conversations that have happened or if folks start understanding the, um, the opinions, if, if everyone's understanding the opinion of one commissioner, then that is, uh, has the potential to act as like the hub and spokes, um, of a serial communication whereby, you know, the Brown Act, uh, a key tenet of that is to avoid, um, any, um, consensus building outside of a, uh, of a public hearing setting. So I would recommend that there not be conversations, um, if, um, if information is submitted or if there's conversation tonight.
Um, well, as I say in my letter, I have a different interpretation of the Brown Act. Um, the public's business should be done in public, um, and that's when a majority, that's why it requires that a majority of the, uh, of the public body not discuss an item outside of the, outside of the public meeting. But I hear what the, um, the direct, the planning director said and, uh, um, commissioners can do what they will. So, um, are there any comments from the commissioners on this item, um, as opposed to just accepting the staff recommendation? Yes, Commissioner Dawson.
Yeah, Chair Shiffrin, I just, um, I'm looking at the, um, it, it appears that a couple of folks have their hands raised. And so maybe we could go back and just hear from them if they, they have something to say about this item. That's all I had to say.
I, um, haven't closed the public hearing, so it'd be totally appropriate if there, I don't see anybody there. You, you can see more than I can, so, um, if there are members of the public who would like to speak on this item, understanding that it undoubtedly will be continued to the October 15th meeting, um, just raise your hand and, um, you can be called on.
This is the clerk. There is one member, and I'm gonna allow them to talk. For the other two people on the line, if you wish to speak to this item, please press star nine and you'll be called on after this meeting.
51 participants, public 9921. I don't know if somebody can let them in.
Yes, yes, I see that.
Okay, you have to unmute yourself and then you have up to three minutes.
So, member of the public.
And you may have to unmute both your phone and your computer.
The member of the public right now that we have online and ready to, to speak, please press star six to unmute your phone so that we can hear you. We've already allowed you to talk. Repeat the last four of the number tests.
9921.
The member of the public whose phone number ends in 9921, it appears you have not correctly connected to audio, please dial back in if you can.
Well, welcome, Commissioner Greenberg. You're just in time, um, for us to finish our consideration of item number two. If, uh, the member of the public 992, uh, 21 wants to speak to this, um, item and is able to unmute themselves. Um, could I ask the clerk if the member of the public has raised their hand to speak on this item?
Yes, there are two members of the public with their hands raised. The one that has the floor now, last four numbers, 9921, is not connecting to the audio. I've asked them to unmute, but they either need to press star six to unmute their phone or call back in. Oh, here we go.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Oh, I've been trying, I am sorry, I've been trying forever. It, the directions didn't include star six. I've unmuted my phone and I'm sorry, I was trying to speak during oral communications, but I couldn't figure out the star six. It's not on the directions.
That, what you, um, um, did you want to speak on this item as well or just oral communications?
Oral communications. I have a lot to say about the Warp Master Plan, but not right now. No, thank you.
Okay, well, right.
I encourage you to put on the directions that we see online, star six, because I couldn't figure it out at all. And I heard there were other people and maybe they couldn't figure it out.
Well, that's a question.
It says on the directions just to press star nine and wait to raise your hand if you wish to comment. It doesn't say unmute or star six. So, um, I'll wait. When will oral communications be allowed?
I, unless there are, uh, is a lot of more discussion on this item, it should be, uh, quite soon, so hang in there.
Thank you.
Maybe that's a good direction to staff to clarify the directions on the agenda so people know it to unmute pressing star six. We're all struggling with this technology, uh, which is not simple.
Chair.
So is there no, is there a?
Chair, this is Sarah, clerk number two. Um, I just want to clarify for the last speaker. Did she want to or not want to speak on the warp item?
She does not want to speak on the walk, warp item. She wants to speak on oral communications.
Okay, so just to be clear, besides star six, anyone who has phone called in, you can press the mute and unmute button on your telephone and that will also unmute your phone. It does not have to be star six, but it is also an option.
Is there another member of the public who has their hand raised?
There is.
Do you want to speak on this item or oral communications? If you don't want to speak on this item, but on oral communications, you can lower your hand because once we're done with this item, we will go back to oral communications. So if you want to speak on this item, please unmute your phone, star six or unmute and start speaking.
You're on the line.
Okay. It's amazing I'm on the line. Thank you for calling on me. I've been trying since office since the start of the meeting to unmute my phone without direction on how to do that. I wish to speak on oral communications.
Well, you're gonna have.
I don't know how to unraise my hand because that instruction is also not on your.
Can you just, uh, wait quietly, uh, and I'll call on you when we're done with this item, okay? Whoops, looks like you muted yourself. All right, is there anybody else out there who wants to speak on this item? We will go back to oral communications when we're done with this item.
No one else has raised their hand, Chair.
Seeing no one, would somebody like to make a motion to continue this, uh, item to our October 15th meeting?
I'll move to continue that item till October 15th.
Thank you.
I'll second.
There's been a motion by Commissioner Nielsen, seconded by Commissioner Dawson to continue the item. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Nielsen.
Aye.
Spellman.
Aye.
Conway.
Aye.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Dawson.
Aye.
Maxwell.
Aye.
Chair Shiffrin.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. It passes unanimously. This item will be on our October 15th meeting. Let us now return to oral communications and our frustrated callers who will now have a chance to talk to us for up to three minutes on an item that is not on the agenda. So you now know the way to do it, so hopefully it won't be a problem. So, uh, clerk, will you call one of the?
Okay, member of the public with the last four digits of 4370, you're on the line. Please unmute yourself.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go.
I suggest when you tell us to unmute ourselves, please tell us to push star six for future. Thank you. Hello, my name is Susan Monheith, and I am wanting to comment on the 101 Felix Street, a proposed development that would require the city council to pass a general plan amendment and then spot rezone that specific parcel to accommodate a developer who wants to put in a lucrative, um, additional housing of up to 80 units there. I think that bypassing the public democratic participation process that was entered into to build the general plan that took seven years is, I don't even have words for it, not a good idea. Spot rezoning is very bad planning, and I urge anyone who has any vote in that to oppose it. I would not want to see a coastal commission amendment to a plan in order to comment, to accommodate this developer either. Um, a couple of things, and I'll try to be brief. When you have 80% plus bonus densities, that brings it up to 90% of public, uh, of, uh, housing being at prime rate, then it's used the basis on which the affordable housing, uh, cost is calculated. And what you end up with is affordable housing for people who make $1,000 to $200,000 a year. And it's not really affordable and will not support the working people who serve this community. I would also like to say that the Cypress Point Development Project, just another example of how badly managed it is, is that last week, there was a, there are sewer problems, there are sewer leaks all over the part, the property. And the contractor who is fixing it asked everyone in the complex to park on the street. So if you think that adding 80 more units won't have parking, um, uh, repercussions to the neighborhood, that's really, really wrong. In this case, everybody left to park on the street and many, many of those people got tickets because they don't have parking permits. So the contractor did not ask people in one area to park on the street one day and in another area to park on the street another day. They, they blanketly asked everyone to do it, and that's, um, typical of the way that property is mismanaged on a regular basis. So please, please, if you have any ability to stop and discontinue the proposed project at 101 Felix Street, I urge you to do so for the neighborhood, for the community, for the protection of the environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we hear from the next speaker, please?
Hello, is it my turn?
You're on the line.
Thank you. It's been a long wait. Okay, so I have three very important questions. My name is Keshad Durham. I have lived on Felix Street. I want to speak to that 101 Felix Street as well. I've lived here 17 years. I also speak for many of my neighbors who've lived here 75 years. We didn't move to downtown, um, and it's remarkable just as a teacher to be able to, um, live in an area, share the area with other, we, if you don't know our area, we have the lion's share of density. Please come to our street, even during COVID, there's not one parking space. And often, I know this neighborhood very well, often Cypress Point has four to six people in their one bedrooms. They do this to create affordable housing. So my question is, you know, this is a long day. I've been teaching all day and I'm just, I don't understand the system. I haven't been getting, getting an answer from Ryan Bane. How does the city council vote to deny with prejudice? And how is it allowed to come back again, that it has to be revoted with people who weren't there for the entire public hearing? Please answer that question. My second question is about density. I've done the math, um, Ryan Bane's numbers, I took his numbers, and he's saying that 20% of the 80, that's 16, will be affordable. But they get this bonus, so they could build up to 120. That means on that parcel, there would be 16 out of 360, so do the math. That's about 4.5% affordable. And I want to be clear, you know, we have our lion's share of affordability. People have lived here longer than I in, in apartments nearby that are truly affordable. And they could not afford, teachers could not afford the 2,400. That management is egregious. They tack on fees, they gouge people, they've had constant, I walked that area. They have had constant leaks and they charge the tenants for their leaks. Um, so I'm just curious, if the density, with the density bonus, you are not giving very much affordable housing. And my third question is around, um, the area, um, median income this point. Well, that was brought up already, so I'm just going to say that if you, oh, the density, non-conforming density. So the question is, should they be able to double their density? Because they're going up 20 dwelling units, they're already at 27, they're non-conforming, and, and they're asking to go up to 30 dwelling units per acre. Well, in actuality, do the math, 16 divided by 360, um, the math is, we'll actually bring them up, with 360 on an 8.8 parcel, that is 41 dwelling units per acre. So please tell me, how are they, how are they going from non-conforming and asking to be doubling their density in an area that is the most dense already? This will not be workforce, they claim it's workforce housing, it will not be workforce housing. Please answer those questions about how this vote to deny with prejudice is happening again. I do not understand the process. It seems very unjust all along. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, this project is not before the commission, it has not been before the commission. It's before the city council. I think the questions are more appropriate to be brought, brought to the city council meeting. My understanding is it's, the item is scheduled for the next city council meeting. So that would be a time to raise your questions if you're dissatisfied with what is being recommended at that time or even if you're satisfied with it. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak during oral communication?
Yes.
Okay.
Speaker, you're on the line. Please unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Okay, yes. Uh, please identify yourself and you have up to three minutes.
Okay, um, my name is Chris Sager, and I am a resident of, about 12 years, on Felix Street. And I am calling in opposition to, um, the 101 project, 101 Felix project, just for, um, what the previous ladies had mentioned and also what they have in as far as one, um, it's an archaeological sensitive site. And if you go through the general plan, I hope all of you guys have, being on the planning commission, and you read over it and you look at all the discrepancies of what this project would violate. And you are from archaeology, um, liquef, liquefaction zone, a FEMA tsunami zone, a flood zone. There's only one way of ingress in and out of there, so if there's a fire or a flood or anything to get anybody out of there, it would just be a down show. Um, it is in a fire heavy, uh, fire hazard warning zone. Um, and these issues alone would just tell me that this is not a good idea to put more housing, to put more housing in the spot. Can you guys hear me okay?
Not well.
Uh, so, that's, that's pretty much all I have to say is it's, it's not a good place to, to develop in. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to this item? Or to oral, on oral communications, it doesn't have to just be on this item, it can be on another item if there is the interest.
Hello, hi.
Yes.
Oh, hi. The, so, uh, I guess I'm, I'm live now. So my name is Sandra Ivany. I live, um, right, uh, near Neri Lagoon, adjacent to Cypress Point. Um, I have been working with the committee for many years to maintain the lagoon to, uh, uh, obviously, I'm not maintaining the lagoon, but it's a citizens group that's overseeing that. And it is a very, um, sensitive, delicate ecosystem with 240 species of birds. And the Department of Public Works, uh, has a budget of about $300,000 per year to maintain the lagoon, to pull the tulips, take care of it. Um, the site, uh, while, uh, it's four different buildings, the Cypress Point Development is four different buildings and comes very close to the lagoon, but I, I don't really want to dwell on that in my, in my time because that should seem kind of obvious. And I realize it's not before the commission right now, so we're kind of chirping in, uh, at a time when it's not even before you. But I think that many of us feel extremely passionate about this for a variety of reasons that have been mentioned. The city plan that took seven years to develop and had input from 100 hours of citizen communication, the, the environmental issues with, with building there, the, the social justice issues that was men, mentioned about the rents and escalating the rents, the gentrification, the parking, the safety. There's many issues, um, and we've been, many of us have been writing about them. So it's almost redundant to talk about them. But the one I wanted to talk about right now in the time left that kind of struck me today is the democratic process. Because when COVID started and the lockdown started, we gathered in the first month, month and a half, 3,000 signatures that were opposed to this development. And, uh, while we're fighting on a national level to keep our democracy here, I feel like we're also having a fight here in Santa Cruz where. I feel like we're also having a fight here in Santa Cruz where you have a city government that doesn't seem to be listening to the community's wisdom with the library garage and with this one and with many others. Growth is really not something that's unlimited and I think we've discovered that. We don't have the resources for unlimited growth in Santa Cruz. We don't have the water, the roads, any of it. And when this comes, hopefully this is not going to come before you because we are wondering why it's going to be voted on a second time when it's already been voted on once and the citizens' re- has already put in so much energy on this that.
Bishop.
Okay, I'm just talking about democratic process, guys, and thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public who wants to speak during oral communications?
All clear.
All clear, okay. So, I'm gonna close oral communications now, move on to the rest of the agenda. Are there any information items from staff or anyone else?
Yes, I have one. Good evening, commissioners, Eric Marletta, Assistant Director. I just wanted to report that the nine-unit townhouse development at 914, 916 Seabright Avenue was approved by the city council on September 22nd. I'll note that when your commission reviewed that project last June, the developer hadn't had the incomes verified of the three tenants that were occupying the units on the property. And so, under the demolition authorization permit ordinance, the assumptions made that they're either low or moderate income, therefore, replacement housing requirements are triggered. Between the planning commission meeting and the council meeting, the applicant went ahead and got one of the tenants' incomes verified through the housing authority and it was determined that they were in fact not low or moderate income. So, therefore, the replacement housing provisions were no longer triggered. So, that sort of became a moot point. The other item that was a fairly significant discussion involving public access between Sumner and Seabright, the council concurred with your recommendation and opted not to require that as conditions of approval. So, that was not included. But that project was approved unanimously by the council. Looking at the schedule for the upcoming meetings, in addition to the Wharf plan, which you just continued to October 15th, we also have the inclusionary housing ordinance amendments involving the section eight vouchers scheduled for that meeting as well. And then looking out to the first meeting in November, we're targeting that as a potential date for the slope ordinance to return to you. And then there's a possibility that a transitional housing project at 119 Coral might be scheduled for that meeting as well. So, that's, those are the informational items. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any questions from commissioners? Okay, the next item is subcommittee advisory body oral reports. And does any other commissioner have, we just sort of got the report from the housing subcommittee. I actually can give you a report of some from the resilient coast technical advisory committee, which I have, representing the commission on. As you know, the Caltrans is funded, the coastal commission is funded to look at the coast, the beaches, starting at Seabright and then looking, doing a study along West Cliff in terms of how to make the coast, quote, "more resilient." And it's getting near the end, so I think it may be worth it for me to let you know. I'm sure Tiffany Wise-West will be here when it's ready to go, but I want to give you a little preview of where it seems to be heading. The plan will include a cost benefit analysis, although it's a very difficult analysis to do given so many of the variables. There are going to be four options in looking at the different segments of the coast. Business as usual, recreation focused action, protection focused actions and managed retreat. So, there are going to be different projects for each zone and it goes from the immediate ten to fifteen years to longer term with some midterm as well. And it's, the plan is going to define triggers. It's not so much that those dates are in themselves set in stone, but there'll be triggers in the plan for when it makes sense to move from, let's say, recreational focused actions to, in one zone, to protect the coastline to, you know, the next, the next kind of action. There's a lot, they were dealing with uncertainty around the probability of sea level rise. There's economic evaluation and net present value, the recreational values among, it seemed like between the four different approaches, it had a minimis, de minimis effect on transportation. So, the major findings were recreational focus had the highest positive net present value. Managed retreat was similar, but only if it was done recently. The protection focus was also positive, but less, and business as usual actually also had a positive impact, but a smaller one. So, there's going to be a preferred adaptation strategy for each of the seven zones and I'll spare you going through them. I did take notes, if anybody's interested, I'd be happy to share them. But just mainly I want to let you know that the, I think the expectation is that the plan is going to be completed over the next few months and in early next year, it's going to go through the process, which is going to involve recommended local coastal program amendments. So, it will be coming to the commission formally for recommendation to the council on the plan. Any, does anybody have a question? Seeing none, are there any items to be referred to the next agenda that commissioners would like to bring up? Seeing none, thank you all very much. We did get out of here somewhat early, not as early as I expected, but see you all on the 15th. We are now adjourned.